We're at the FSC lady tonight. Well, good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, December 17th, 2012. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Galloway.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Piana.
Here.
Lennon.
Here.
Mayor Coulter.
Here, yes, thank you. We have a full house tonight, and our first order of business would be the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, changes, corrections to the agenda this evening?
I would move that we accept the agenda as presented. Support?
Moved by Martin, supported by Galloway. Any other discussion on the agenda? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Galloway.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Next item of business would be presentations. Our first presentation is Ferndale Public Schools, although I'm looking and I don't see our public schools were up here today, so maybe they are not here yet. So we'll move on to our second presentation, which is the Ferndale Community Foundation Presentation to the Historical Society. And Greg is here on behalf of the Ferndale Community Foundation, along with Jeannie Davis, on behalf of the Historical Society, looking very holiday-ish this evening.
Actually, we are both with the Ferndale Community Foundation. I'm the Chair, Greg Pollica, and this is Jeannie Davis, Vice Chair of the Foundation. And on December 8th, the Ferndale Community Foundation partnered with the Ferndale Historical Society to create the first historic holiday tour. I want to thank the co-chairs, Gary Andrews-Taylor, Sharon Chess, Jeannie Davis, and myself, who did the bulk of the work on the event. We had seven stops on the tour and guided over 45 patrons. Through ticket sales and sponsorships, we raised over $1,300. I'd like to take a moment to thank the sponsors: Lori Davis, Remax Vision was our lead sponsor, Chess Roofing and Siding, our V Associates and Mutual Fund Management Company, Kurtz Custom Promotions, the bar downstairs, and Councilman Dan Martin. I'd also like to thank our volunteers who helped with the event: Lori Davis, Roger Schmidt, Peggy Snow, Jean Sping, and Helen Weber. After paying all the bills, the event netted $909.18. Originally, the foundation was going to split the amount between the Historical Society, but the board met last week and we decided that we're going to give all of the $909.18 to the Historical Society because we feel it's going to be used in the best way. So I have a check here to Ferndale Historical Society.
And that got him off his feet. Awesome.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Wonderful. I'd just like to take a moment to say thank you to the citizens of Ferndale for supporting the event, coming out and doing the tour. We had many great responses. I had nothing negative come back. There was nothing that went wrong. Everybody had a lovely time, and we're really looking forward to establishing this as an annual event. This is a total surprise to us. We're extremely grateful and would like to thank you on behalf of the Board of Directors of Ferndale Historical Society for working with us, and we would be a pleasure to work with you.
We also have some nice little plaques as appreciation. We couldn't do this without the homeowners who gave up their homes to us to allow people to, instead of peeking through the curtains, actually walk into people's homes and check out everything that was going on, decorations and how people just decorated normally. So we have these to present. I don't see any, other than Sharon Chess, who also gave up her home, I didn't see anybody else from the event. Jeannie Davis was another, one of our homeowners, as well as 302 Vestor, Elegance by Design, Drayton Presbyterian Church, and 333 West Woodland. So thank you all.
Thanks, Greg. Thanks, Jeannie. Great, very fun, creative event. It's not on the agenda, but I see our county commissioner is in the audience, and I always allow Craig to come up and give us the county perspective when he's here.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and it'll be the last time, so you won't have to do that, at least for a while. But a couple of announcements. I am Craig Covey, your county commissioner for about 13 more days or so. You may know that for the past couple of months up at our county commission meetings, we've had protesters coming, people who are very interested and concerned about our animal control, and specifically the way the county does its job of trying to adopt out pets, find lost pets with their owners, and also to reduce the rate of euthanasia. Those folks have been coming to the meetings literally for four months, and I guess I have some kind of good news. There was some initial reluctance on the part of the administration to deal with the issues, but it goes to show that in a democracy, if the citizens are willing to keep coming and keep talking, keep raising issues, they make progress. And while it would seem like a no-brainer, the Oakland County Pet Adoption Center is now going to begin using social media. That is the way that most pet adoption agencies now function. You need a pet, or you're looking for a lost pet, you go online. Oakland County, for some reason, did not follow those procedures, but they are going to now. So I think it's pretty good news. There is a new director now to the Oakland County Animal Control. His name is Mr. Gat, Bob Gat, former, current mayor of Novi, and he'll be taking over, and I think he's going to make, he's going to do a good job, and he's real interested in trying to bring up policies that are a little more modern and to continue to try to reduce the rate of euthanasia for our animal control, so that we can have one of the best systems in the state. I mentioned a couple of weeks ago that I honored, or we honored, Rafino Valentine and Valentine Podca, which the commissioners were just thrilled with and really enjoyed a lot. At the last meeting, we honored Jack and Annette Aaronson, did a Really Need Proclamation. The folks up there, Aunt Pontiac, we're just thrilled to meet those two. It was a really, really nice, nice event. And finally, each year, Oakland County employees can donate to a casual day fund, and all year long, those funds are accumulated by, if you wear casual clothes or what have you, I'd probably have to pay a lot of money into that fund myself. But, and then at Christmas time, they present checks to local charities. And a couple of years ago, we began lobbying to have a Ferndale charity included, and so for the second year in a row, Fern Care will be the recipient of a check from the employees' casual day fund, and I'll be schlepping up to Pontiac tomorrow to pick up that check, and I'll deliver it to Ann Heller and Fern Care. So finally, I just want to take this opportunity to thank the people of Ferndale for allowing me to be their county commissioner for the past two years. I enjoyed it a lot. It was rough. I got a little gray hair from it, but I learned a lot. We did some good work. We certainly made ourselves known up there, and it was just, it was my pleasure to serve the people. And I thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Greg.
And that concludes our presentations. Next order of business would be a public hearing, and the public hearing is on the redevelopment liquor license for 241 West Nine Mile Road LLC, doing business as Ferndale Public House. So at this time, I would like to open the public hearing and see if there's anyone from the public that would like to address council on the possibility of a redevelopment liquor license at 241 West Nine Mile Road. Cherry Wells.
Cherry Wells, yes, 315 West Troy. I was impressed with Mr. King when I was walking along the street. I think we were putting up some of the historical plaques, and he was down on his stoop down, picking up all this glass, the broken glass from that front window that had gotten broken, and he hadn't even had an ownership interest enough to do that. So that was wonderful. I do want to make the comment that in reading through the materials, to state that any new business isn't going to, with 70 people occupancy, isn't going to make some impact on the parking when there isn't any parking available, is not exactly accurate. And that's just, other than that, 20 more bars. Come on and get them.
Anyone else from the public that would like to address this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask, let's see, can I ask our city attorney to introduce this?
Certainly. I'd be happy to, Your Honor. Back on November 26, the Liquor License Review Committee had an opportunity to meet with Mr. King, one of the representatives for 241 West Nine Mile Road LLC, with respect to his proposal to seek a redevelopment license within the city of Ferndale. The review committee went through the criteria that is set forth in the city's inter-county on-premises license transfer policy, and has considered certain facts that were presented by Mr. King with respect to his proposal. The review committee has made certain findings of fact that are included in council's material this evening, and is recommending that council approve the redevelopment license as requested.
Thank you. Questions or comments of council?
Well, having sat on that committee, one of the things that we took into consideration is that this is a restaurant going into a spot where there was previously a restaurant, which, you know, laid some of our concerns regarding crowding in the downtown and parking and such. So while it would be a misstatement to say that the parking demands weren't going to be impacted relative to when space is vacant, relative to when it was Josephine's, we felt comfortable with the application. And certainly, he's had a good track record at the Imperial, I believe, not any problems over there, and the concept, I think, is a nice fit for the city.
I just want to reiterate, I appreciate Mr. King's investment in the city of Ferndale. Imperial looks wonderful. Business is good, and you're taking a vacant space on Nine Mile. If passed, appreciate it.
Other comments?
My comments were, my questions were addressed, or Scott said the same thing I wanted to say.
Very good. Then a motion would be in order.
I move to adopt the findings of the fact proposed by the review committee and approve the on-premises Public Act 501 of 2006 liquor license Class C license with Sunday sales requested by 241 West Nine LLC, Ferndale Public House, to be located at 241 West Nine and approved at the proposed location above all others.
Support?
Moved by Lennon, supported by Galloway. By the way, where did the name come from? Ferndale Public House?
Just the name is, we're taking love to the community, and we are definitely, to quell any-
In fact, I'm sorry. I zoomed in to put you on the spot, but for the folks at home, they can only hear you if you're talking to Mike. And this is Jeff King, owner of the Imperial, and-
Good evening. How are you?
Good evening, Jeff.
We are interested in community. That is, has been our focus in previous business and moving forward. We, just to quell any concerns, we are a restaurant. We are not a bar, that I've heard some people say. We have every interest in food, and the reality of our business is, in order to keep food costs in line, to be able to offer affordability to the consumer, we feel that it's crucial to have the sales of alcohol, and we do sell quite a bit of non-alcoholic at the, at the current space. But the Public House is just, are thinking about a place, a gathering place for adults and children. Our current location is very family-friendly. We do get a lot of young families, and our age group varies, so we feel like we've created a place for the community and people outside the community to come and see what Ferndale's all about and see what is happening with the growth.
Great. Appreciate your investment.
Thank you very much.
All right, if there's no further, oh, yeah.
In going through the application, the Liquor License Review Committee did have some concerns regarding our current criteria and how permissive it would be for less attractive businesses for our mix of downtown, and the city attorney is currently reviewing those standards for presentation against the plan commission to come back to council and to see whether or not we need to tighten things up down there, not because of this applicant, but just because of, just different developments unrelated to Mr. King's facilities.
If I could follow up on that, Councilman, I will plan to have a report also for council prior to its next meeting on that issue.
Great. Look forward to it.
All right, last chance for comments. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Our next item of business would be call to audience. Call to audience is a chance for the audience to speak. Three minutes now, up to 30 minutes, on any topic that's not on the agenda, and if we get to 30 minutes, we can do it again at the end of the meeting. But three minutes on any topic that's not on the agenda.
My name is Madison, 76th and 77th, Georgia. I have no typed out messages tonight and no policies tonight. Only thing I have is a heartfelt wish for a Merry Christmas for everybody on the council, and a happy and prosperous New Year.
Same to you, Dennis.
Same to you, Dennis.
Hi, how are you?
Great.
Good. My name is Martin Camora. This is my associate, Lance Savaya. We just wanted to introduce ourselves. We're new to the city. We just purchased a collision shop on East Nine Mile, 836 East Nine Mile. I just moved here, I don't know.
East Nine Mile Road.
East Nine Mile, yep. So we do-
What's the BP, eh?
Right next door to the BP on the south side. We got the pleasure of meeting you earlier, Dave. So we just want to introduce ourselves and let everyone know that we're here, and if anybody's got any, you know, mechanical issues, bodywork, stuff that's needed, oil change, come and support us. We're glad to open a business, start a business here in the city. We love Ferndale, and we always come here and entertain ourselves. So finally, we got a business here, so we're close by the bars, and, you know, we're going to have a good time. So just wanted to, yeah, cool. So thanks. Nice meeting you guys, and hopefully we'll get to meet you all personally soon. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Welcome to Ferndale.
Awesome. Now there's a businessman right there. Anyone else would like to address council this evening? Christina from the DDA.
Of course. One last message before the end of the year, right? So I just wanted to first wish everybody happy holidays and hope for a fun, safe, and very peaceful holiday for everybody. But I want to thank everyone for coming out for the Holiday Ice Festival in Winterfest Market. Good turnout, and, you know, despite the weather, everybody had a great time out there. Looked like it was just a lot of fun. We were out there for many hours ourselves, so we were having fun. And then also, I just wanted to reiterate that we have Merry Midnight Madness on Thursday, this Thursday, so the shops will be open late, so I encourage everybody to get in all their last-minute Christmas holiday shopping in. And also, for those who are not aware, that the Rust Belt Market is open for the 12 days of Christmas. So there is the opportunity to hit the bout, not just on the weekend, but during the week, so.
I didn't know that. Thank you, and thanks for all your hard work on the festival last weekend. It was really a successful event. Great job to you and all your volunteers. Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda are items that we consider routine, and we enact in one motion unless anything gets pulled from the consent agenda. But before I ask, if there's anything to be pulled, I will read the consent agenda. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held November 26, 2012. Item B, approval to designate Lloyd Curtin, DPW Director, the Street Administrator, and to provide a copy of the resolution to the Michigan Department of Transportation. C, approval of the dues for the Eight Mile Boulevard Association totaling $2,500. D, approval to pay the invoice from Lenny's Copy Center for $3,689 for the printing of precinct maps and voter information brochures to be charged to Central Services Operating Supplies. E, approval of the special event permit for the BBQ Rib Burnout Six on Saturday, February 2nd, 2013, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., as detailed in the Special Events Committee Minutes, and with the consensus of the Special Events Committee. F, approval to pay $55,397.16 to Spyglass for the successful implementation of forward-looking cost reduction savings as submitted by the Project and Grant Coordinator. G, approval of the refunding bond award to the bidder submitting the vast proposal as submitted by our Assistant City Manager. H, approval of the project estimate of $15,000 to refurbish ladder one from J&amp;J Fleet and Fire Truck Service to be taken from the motor pool account. And I, approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the City Manager's Office, subject to the review of the Council Finance Committee. Council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening.
I move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Support? Martin, did you?
I support.
All right, so moved by Piana, supported by Martin. Any discussion on any of those items? Discussion.
I'll discuss, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Cheryl.
Yeah, go ahead, Cheryl.
Yeah, F?
Go ahead, yes.
Okay, good.
Three minutes. All yours.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
When I was reading through this, I've had a business AT&amp;T account for many years, and it's been their practice, AT&amp;T's practice, to send me a letter every year to say, "We've canceled this program, but you can sign up for this program instead." And so this idea of being out of contract and changing from $220 a month per line to this exorbitant amount, I'm just wondering how that got by and who is it supposed to not get by, without naming names?
Well, Joe, I'm going to let you speak to this issue. Joe is the one that brought this item forward. Joe is our Project and Grant Coordinator.
To some extent. Well, and why the Project and Grant Coordinator is involved in this particular thing? Did we get grant money to offset Spyglass?
So we'll let Joe explain that.
This was considered an efficiency project by the City Manager's Office to improve our telecommunications. We went out of contract in April, but that didn't appear until July. It was caught by our staff. However, the Spyglass telecommunications audit was going on concurrently. Unfortunately, we actually ended up getting to a point where we needed a telecommunications audit because we were unable to find our AT&amp;T account representation. We did make several attempts to contact AT&amp;T and former representatives who had fallen out of touch with the organization and had moved on elsewhere. Unfortunately, we also discovered during this time that AT&amp;T had moved our government office to Atlanta and did not assign us new account management in 2011. Now in 2012, AT&amp;T has recently established a new government office to be located in Southfield, so we do have, again, local representation, and Spyglass has been helping us facilitate that relationship again. So we do have now account management again for our government accounts, and we also, as a product of the telecommunications inventory, were given a complete list detailing all of our telecommunications accounts, the direct lines associated with all the accounts, and the contract expiration dates, so we can move forward with better and more efficient contract management.
And just a question. Joe, is this a program whereby we engage Spyglass, they identify cost savings to the city, and then we split the savings essentially with them? Is that how that works?
In this case, there's several phases. This is phase two of the three-phase project. During this phase, they were to find cost reductions that we were on track to pay anyway. Because we weren't, we hadn't taken the proactive approach of renewing the contracts because we didn't know we were out, we were scheduled to pay those anyway. So now, they identified that problem. We did renew the contracts, and now Spyglass is pursuing credit restoration to all those overcharges. So we are pursuing that with AT&amp;T, as far as getting our credits back to a zero balance and removing the overcharges.
So what controls do we have in place that, to ensure we don't fall off an account again?
Well, the good news is, again, as I said, we have an inventory tool now, so we do actually have every account. But the problem is, is we need an auto notification mechanism. That would be my recommendation. I would like to work with the City Manager and the Finance Director to see if we can engage our New World software and see if they have a solution. If not, I would recommend we look into options for contract management software.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
I just got a couple of comments.
Yeah.
Just a couple of comments, not worth pulling any item, but I'll let it go this year, but, and I have a meeting with the City Manager later on this week on the dues for the Eight Mile Boulevard Association. I have seen absolutely zero improvement on Eight Mile since its inception. In fact, East Eight Mile looks worse than ever has. So I'll give them one more year, and we'll talk about that April. Okay. And I want to thank Madam Clerk for going locally on the printing.
Oh.
Finally, thank you.
Giving business to Lenny's Copy Center, that's correct.
He did a great job and really accommodated our fast turnaround schedule.
Any other comments from the public or council on the consent agenda?
Yes, and just a follow-up comment onto Councilman Lennon. Perhaps it's time to have the Executive Director of the Eight Mile Boulevard Association to come in again. It's been over a year, because I inquired about what they were up to last year, so.
You did, did you?
And I think Derek might be our, is Derek our representative on, I don't see him anymore?
He's heavily involved, so I believe so.
I think he's our, you are too, so if you could maybe pass it along to Sammy, it might be time to have another visit.
You know, in, every year when we budget the CDVG monies, Haven comes here, is willing to talk to us, answer our questions, really advocate for their organization, explain why we should fund them year after year. And it's been unfortunate that we haven't been able to give them more money, but they're always gracious for what we do give them. And some of these organizations that we belong to, while in principle, I like them, while I went to high school with many of them, you know, they still need to justify why we should spend $2,500, $5,000, what have you. So I think for these groups that we support, they should be made known that we'd like to see them at least once a year before they get $2,500. It's not a lot of money in an $18 million budget, but, you know, still, it's money we don't have to spend, it could spend on something else.
I'll make sure they get invited.
All right. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda, item A, consideration of ordinance number 1135 to repeal sunset date of Environmental Sustainability Commission. This was on our agenda at our last meeting, and we talked about how the sunset was coming for this group, and we wanted to see what we wanted to do about moving this group forward. And I think Melanie met with the group, right? And do you want to sort of talk about where we're landed?
Sure. Joe, will you assist where I need assistance? But I joined the latest FBSC committee meeting to talk to them about some of the goals, future goals of the City Council, and how we were trying to align goals with the departments and the DDA, and the FBSC committee was also being looked at. The reason the ordinance is up for review is because it expires at the end of December 31st, and I think everyone who's on the committee is really open to revisiting the ordinance, and the reasons for its creation has slightly, it's slightly changed over the years, and we just need to tighten up the goals and mission of the FBSC, and the committee members were very open to doing that in partnership with the city. What I have recommended over the next three months is that the committee work with us, the council, through Joe, on adding amendments or suggesting amendments to the ordinance, and then it goes to the Ordnance Review Committee, and then work with committee members to come up with a stronger mission and goals for 2013. So I think this is very in line with the city's desire to sort of bring all of our great sustainability projects under one umbrella, sort of the umbrella of where the city is going with its energy efficiency and sustainability. We have lots of things in the hopper, and this is just another activity to make sure we're all rowing in the same direction.
That sounds pretty good.
So the recommendation would be?
The recommendation- The recommendation would be to just reveal, repeal the ordinance, and then have it come back to council in three months to, sorry, repeal the sunset provision in the ordinance, and have it come back to council in three months, working closely with the FC committee.
They felt that was enough time?
Yes.
And I'm looking, I see Doug is in the audience, and Craig, I know you're on that committee, so my understanding is that's acceptable to all parties?
And just to give you a reason why it needs to be updated, there are some programs in there that are no longer active, as stated in the ordinance, and we just need to take a full look at it so that we are moving towards the right direction.
Well, then a motion would be in order.
All right, I will do that. I move to approve the repeal of Section 2142, Article 8 of the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission ordinance to allow the FESC an extended period of time to review and revise the duties of the commission as listed in the ordinance.
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Galloway. Any other discussion or comments on this item?
Well, just a comment, this was my concern when we originally set this up, that the commission didn't have a specific charge of action. And I think it's my opinion and maybe others up here that these commissions function best when they're given a little bit of direction from the electeds up here. So this isn't meant as a way of somehow minimizing their contributions, but rather, you know, maximizing the value of their input so that we can actually implement more things, or perhaps draw more upon their knowledge base and make Ferndale a more environmentally sustainable community.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Item B on the regular agenda, consideration of non-union administrative employee benefits. City manager, is that you?
Actually, I'm going to have Jennifer Longthorne come up and talk about that real quick. She's our HR manager. Good evening, mayor and council. What you have before you here tonight is a brief explanation of the proposed changes that we would like to implement with our non-union employee benefits. That would include all of our department heads and sort of first-line managers, anyone not in a union. These changes were made to all of our union contracts between the timeframe of January of 2012 through July of 2012. And we thought that it was only fair that our non-union folks also moved in the same fashion. What we're asking for is approval to continue with 0% wage increases, to make a change to the healthcare plan that would put us in line with the same plan that all of our other employees are currently on as active employees for a couple of reasons. Number one, it fosters that consistency between our groups, especially our non-union folks, who actually have a higher copay right now than our union employees. In addition, there's a small change to the dental copay, and we also are asking for effective July 1 that our non-union employees, consistent with a couple of our labor groups, begin contributing 20% of the cost of the healthcare insurance, should they so choose. So those are just a few highlights of the changes that we're proposing.
So do the out-of-pocket expenses go into effect July 1st, then? Or January 1st?
Out-of-pocket expenses for the healthcare?
Right.
Correct, correct. Premium cost sharing would go into effect July 1, yeah. For new hires. For new hires, yep.
And as you've said, this puts them in line with what we've done now with all of our union employees as well.
This is a 0% increase in actually maintaining the negative five that they had in 2010.
Correct.
That's correct, because all of this group took the minus 5% in 2010. And this is only until, I mean, there's no end date on this, but it's until that's revisited, which would be in the next budget period or whenever.
Correct.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the aforementioned modifications to non-union administrative employee benefits effective January 1, 13, create consistency amongst employees.
Support. Moved by Lennon, supported by Martin. Any other discussion, questions on this item? Thanks, Jenny. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Moving on to our last regular agenda, item C, consideration of graphic design, brand, and logo presentation. And I think, city manager, you'll see that one up too?
No. We are so very excited to bring this significant phase to our website to you today. Joe has been working extremely hard at bringing forward the changes to our website, of which the graphics have to be completed before we move to the actual information provided. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joe and have him give you an update on where we are and where we're going and what we need from you tonight.
Mayor and council, I'm very happy to report this presentation. Well, I'm here to present the final solution being proposed for the graphic design and the branded logo for the city of Ferndale. We've been working on this since July of 2012 with Artemis Technologies, who's doing the backend and the website portion, and Skidmore Studio, who helped drive and consult the design and branding and logo portion.
And I want to mention two council members, right? Councilwoman Piana and Councilman Galloway served on this subcommittee as well, helping us to develop this?
Yes, there was a, there was a review team involved to approve all graphic design, branding, and logo. What we would do is we would, we actually began the process with public input sessions from the business community, the Ferndale Public School District, along with public meetings, social media as well. And then we took that feedback, it's to Skidmore Studio, who conducted those interviews and those surveys. And then based on that, they started developing brands and logo recommendations for us. Once we received those, through a series of iterations and processes, we took those to the review team, which was comprised of key staff members and city council. And we came up with the final product, which we'll be presenting shortly. So just to recap, when looking at our current website, we're looking at the following challenges. The biggest one is that we couldn't manage content in-house. We had to contract, we still contract out for that, so if there's a change or a news update or any content updates, we actually have to request that be made by a third party. So we want to get control back in the house, so our content remains dynamic and up to date. We have more of an incoherent information architecture because of the updated issues. The architecture is not analytically driven. Because the content is out of date, it is more difficult to be user-friendly, and you see obfuscation. And then the graphic design, well, it was designed back in 2006. We've come a long way. So we're looking to facelift the brand, the image, and the marketing position. Okay, so to do that, we started out with the site map, and we had a presentation in August to educate council on the direction of the audience-centric site map. We simplified the navigation, we removed a lot of the primary navigation. We made, we separated the services from department and identified the audiences that would be interested in those services, so they could clearly find what they needed within three clicks. We also want to make sure that we are forward-leaning in our online service options, so you'll see online services continue to be prevalent in the site as we move forward and are able to integrate those. The information architecture was the next component, we also just finished that phase. Again, we reiterated the audience, the audience and the services connection had to be made to make it more user-friendly. We used analytics to drive the content, so we actually had a Google Analytics installed in late March, and we used the analytics to see what were the hotspots on the website, what was being pushed for, what was not being pushed for. And we're going to go with a less-is-more approach. We are going to keep it simple, keep it efficient, keep it lean. Again, with the IA, we will be restoring the content management to us, so it will be up to date. News will be up to date, and events, everything will be modern and up to date. And we have designed the site to be mobile-friendly. You are going to see sales of PCs, and I actually just read a story on it today, that the sales of PCs have been outperformed by tablets and smartphones for the first time this year. And you're going to see that trend continue, so we're going to be also forward-leaning in our design and development and continue designing our sites to be mobile-friendly. This is the current website. Again, you can see some of the issues noted, the dated look, the unclear navigation structure. Hey, the red dot works. The unclear navigation structure, your primary navigation should be up here, left to right. We have static news that we have to put in requests for updates for. Information is kind of compressed, the images kind of compress it. You can't really see a brand image here that really solidifies Ferndale. And you see, there's no search option, which means there's less of a participatory element by our users. This is the city of Ferndale's new branded logo position. This was the first design that was approved by the team that would be incorporated and lead the graphic design for the new website. And I will actually go over and do this, I have this set up. Okay, this is the, unfortunately, I couldn't fit it into the PowerPoint because it's just an image right now, it's not a website. So I couldn't shrink it and have it look crisp. But this is the homepage of the new city of Ferndale website. We will be changing the domain name to ferndalem.gov to modernize it. We have registered the account already with the Government Services Administration, so we've secured the domain. You'll notice an extended search option on the top right of the page. This is also mounted on top of an actual popular searches tool. So any searches that are conducted that have common elements are automatically compiled and listed in the bottom panel right here, so people know where the popular searches already are. To our left, you see our new branded logo position. On the primary navigation, you will see a services approached, doing business, audience, a government audience, an audience for visitors, and a how-do-I, which is also to supplement the user-centric approach of the search. We have a little temperature module right here. We have an online services button that will always be there on every page, and no matter what page you're on on the website, you'll never get lost or away from the online services or social media that the city of Ferndale does participate in. We also have a popular pages function. This tool will actually auto-generate the most popular pages selected by our users. Here, we will have a dynamic rotator, ignore that photo that was taken off Wikipedia. And Chief, could you scroll down on that, please? Also, ignore the background image, that's an iStock photo selected by the designer as a temporary placeholder. Moving down, you'll see crisp, clear news stories that are designed to be written after a blog, so it's like an article-block-centric design. You'll have your news on the left, you'll have your title, you'll have a brief description and an option to read more. You'll also have events that are automatically published here from our event calendar that we will have. The most recent events will auto-populate and kick down old events, and eventually they will be retired off. Below that, you will also have, sorry, you'll also have an icon rotator right here that will list quick links that are going to be based on images that are a little bit more up-to-date for that. We needed some, we're still developing the images and the artwork, so these are temporary placeholders. But you'll notice quick links to, and these are all quick links based on the Google analytics we use on the current site. So this will also change as the analytics are adapted for new users. But you have agendas and minutes, your council calendar, your general news, your online water bill payment, your online payments in general, your, I can't read that.
Document library.
In the document library, which will be a, every single document on the website will be compiled in that one searchable document library that will look and have the appearance of a Windows-based document search. And by, on the bottom, we decided to use a super footer, which is a trending design element in websites. The purpose is to make sure that important information sticks with the user throughout the website, so they always have a central place of reference. So we will have a, an email, an online email registration right here. You will always have an opportunity to submit website feedback on the content right here. You'll have your basic site map navigation, and your navigation for our city services will always be here. So anytime you need a service, you should be able to clearly find what you're looking for. And our general business card design on the right. Next, I will show the sub-page. Okay, again, we have a sub-page, you'll have your header and footer will remain the same. You'll have your sub-page layout, so doing business is our section. These will be three quick sub-pages of that, we're one-stop-ready. We have a mayor's business council feature, we have a press release library. You'll have different, two different types of alerts, a general alert call-out for emergency notifications we want to call people's attention to. And then you'll have informational call-outs, which are going to be used for resources and references. For instance, if they're doing business section, you'll likely find a direct link to the community and economic development page, because it's a related service. Here, the page is set up again to be similar to a blog. You'll have your main feature article, or your most prominent news piece of the page, followed by a smaller piece that will not feature an image. And then we have a third option, the color is still being worked out, but you have a third piece of content. This would denote a different type of content will differ from this to draw your attention to that, so you know how to have clear navigation. Again, your footer is the same, and we do have a style guide to ensure that all content developers and all content management will produce the same product consistent throughout the website.
And my understanding is it's pretty user-friendly, so most people on staff with a minimal amount of training will be able to add content to their website, is that correct?
That is correct.
I kind of jumped the last two sides. Yes, the backend content management system is, it's a Microsoft product, so if you've worked with Microsoft Word, you should be able to work with it. It has a WYSIWYG out of there, which is what you see is what you get out of there, it's very easy to use. Again, if you've used Excel, if you've used Microsoft Word, you could use this product. And Artemis and myself will be conducting the trainings throughout, and we'll be identifying permission roles too, so to make sure the content management is not, not just anybody can promote or create anything, there will be an approval system. Steps to launch day. So with this in mind, with this graphic design pending approval to move forward, we will be looking at backend coding and programming, which is actually already happening right now. I expect that to finish, and the backend skeleton to be made up by early to mid-January. Then Artemis will have to create some specialty design pages that we have requested for. And then myself and other key staff members will begin to migrate and develop content on the backend skeleton. Then we will just conduct some staff training sessions, education sessions, on how to use the website and how it can benefit staff as a tool as well as the public. Then we will conduct a beta launch, and during the launch, as you can see, our objective is to kind of get a feel for the public's insights on our feed, on our actual content, what content we're missing, if they think, you know, we missed a boat on a page, or if they think we provided too much information on something nobody cares about, we want to know about it. So again, we want this to be lean, efficient, and purposeful. So after a 30-day period of looking and pursuing feedback, we hope to launch, hopefully, at some point in March, I would expect. And I, my goal is to have the beta launched by March 1st, my goal. Are there any questions?
Can you explain a little bit, since I was on the review committee? One thing that we loved about the new look of the logo was the different colors, of how we were incorporating the different colors, so can you explain that a little bit?
Yes, yes, I'll actually go back to the logo and the pre- Yes, yes, I'll actually go back to the logo in the previous slide to illustrate that. It's part of the feedback, and one of the most prominent pieces of the feedback received by everyone, was that Ferndale is artistic in nature, so we wanted to incorporate that. So this design actually allows us to have five different swatches for the Ferndale F. So we currently have that to denote different services from the different buildings throughout the city. So we have a green city F, which would be a lighter green, that's the city green, that's for city hall offices. If you have a Department of Public Works service, you'll be seeing this orange, this lighter orange. Then we have a red for the fire department, a blue for the Ferndale Police Department, and a pine green for the recreation. And this will be applied through, it should be applied through, and it can be applied through vehicles, letterhead, however you want to use the logo. That's the greatest thing, is this really provided us flexibility.
And just for folks who might not pick up on it, the swatch there is meant to look like a brush stroke, embracing our artistic.
Yeah, it's tough to see this right now, but soon you'll be seeing this image pop up all over the place, but yeah, the line on the F is actually a quick two brush stroke here, to help reinforce the artistic side of the Ferndale community.
Well, I'm not a graphic designer, but I really like the look, it's clean, it's modern, without being too modern, I guess, if you can say that so, great job. A question about, so you said there's a, there'll be a point on the website where you can literally sign in, you can sign up your email address, and then what, then the city could push information to residents that way, is that something we're going to really encourage residents to do?
Yeah, we're going to be using a constant contact type of tool where residents can sign up for annual news updates and information that the city would like to push out, important city agendas, city events coming up, pretty much what's been on the docket. We want to actually bring that information to you as you request it, so this is going to be an email subscription service that we're going to be providing. Users can also sign up with RSS feeds for any type of news or event on the new city website, so if you're interested in a certain type of event, not all the events, you can actually pick and choose what kind of event category you want to sign up for, and you'll receive that RSS feed, news update.
Nice. Other comments or questions to Joe?
Just a comment, I think it looks great, I appreciate all your work and the work of the review committee, you guys have done a really nice job.
Thank you.
I think the look has really exceeded my expectations. You know, my personal vision that I brought to the review group is don't make it look like government, and even though that we are, because we serve as customers, and that was, I think you've exceeded that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and on the good job note, I mean, the whole committee and all the input has been appreciated, I think the team did a wonderful job, but Joe in particular, I mean, I don't know what exactly your job description is, but I don't think it was leading the project like this, so I do want to commend you for all the work that you've done on this, it's been very helpful.
It was my pleasure, and it was great working with the committee, I mean, everything just worked seamlessly, it was a great process, and I think we came up with an excellent product that Ferndale can be proud of.
You know, and I think it's important to note, too, Joe, that updating our technology, getting, you know, sort of a grasp on our website and updating that, I think has been a goal since Mayor Getter was here, which is three, one, two, three, four mayors ago, so, and you've brought it really around and delivered it to us in a year or two, so congratulations on that, great job.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further discussion, a motion would be in order.
I move to approve moving forward with the new graphic design and city brand solution.
Support. Supported by Piana, supported by Martin. Any final comments or questions on this item? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Colton?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Moving on to call to council, I see our police chief in the back, would you want to, anything from the police department today?
A couple of things, Your Honors, thank you for the time. Number one, always a hard time to follow Joe, because he's such a compelling. First off, once again, I would like to remind the public to please follow us on Twitter, we had.
Which I am now, by the way.
That's what I thought.
Pretty excited about it.
Well, we did actually have our first success with a assistance in a crime being solved through the Twitter program, so it was really an interesting little thing.
The Twitter program?
Whatever the thing is, I'm still not 100% convinced, okay?
I'm not going to ask you to follow it, babe.
Sergeant Brown makes me come up here and remind everybody to please follow us at @FerndalePolice, and it's, it actually has, it actually has shown some success, so, and there's, we have some, about 250 followers so far, so it is a, it is a good tool. We hope to expand it as, as the months go on, and some of our command officers get used to it. The other thing I have is, is that if you follow us, a lot of our advice to shoppers that are on there, as well as on our website, for shopping tips to keep yourself safe during the last week of the holiday season. And lastly, I would like to advise council that we have been meeting closely with the schools in response to the tragedy in Connecticut. We are, many of our protocols that we built on after the last school shooting still exist, but they, quite frankly, have to be dusted off, and we have to revisit them and make sure they're up to date. The new element of adding elementary schools, although they do have in place, and want to make sure the public knows that there are in-place security programs and protocols throughout the schools, this last strategy that brings it to the elementary school level is something that we haven't looked at as strongly as we intend to now. So everybody's taking this very, very seriously, both the school and the city, and we will be forthcoming with other type of training for our folks, and advice and training for the school folks in the very, very near future.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Appreciate it.
Chief Sullivan, anything for the fire department this evening?
Mr. Mayor, council, I just want to make sure everyone has a happy and safe holidays. Remember, keep candles and hurricane-type burners or on plates that are at least one and a half times larger than the height of the candle, or better yet, use the electronic digital ones they have out now, they don't generate heat and they don't start fires. And then watch wiring and that on trees and other ornamentation, because it is the season, and sadly, we typically have at least one fairly horrible fire. I'm hoping this will be the year we don't have any, so that's what I'm looking for, everyone to have a happy and safe holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, good reminder. Derek, anything from the economic development? All right, Joe, anything from recreation tonight?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. Lloyd, anything from DPW this evening?
I just wanted to give council a quick update on our conversion to the new meter-reading program that we have. There's approximately 10,000 accounts that have to be converted. 3,000 of the accounts have been, have had the MTUs or the transmitters installed on the accounts. Of those, 2,200 are reporting and have been linked to the addresses that we have on database for our customers, and they're reading very well. So the additional 700 are reading as well, but they have not been linked to the accounts yet. That's just a matter of doing them in batches, which we're going to continue as the numbers are installed, more are installed. So, so far, it's, you know, baby steps, but, you know, big successes, it's working as it's supposed to, and, you know, provided we have the transmitters from overseas shipped to us, there's, there's a little bit of a bottleneck there, they've had some, I've been told that the manufacturing facility has had a storm a couple of months ago, and they're still trying to recover from that. And so, provided we get these new transmitters in, we should be able to start billing from the software soon, and it would be a big improvement. Thank you.
Just officially, even though we haven't had any snow, the leaf pickup is done.
Oh, yes.
Right? Don't put anything else out at the curb.
No.
And we're ready for snow.
We will be.
Not anxious for it, but we're ready.
Right.
All right, all right, very good, thanks Lloyd.
Mr. Mayor, can we ask questions?
Yes, of course. Dan, oh, Councilman Martin has a question for you, Lloyd.
I'm sorry. So with the delay in delivery of the transmitters, when do you expect the rollout to be completed? Because we're already past the original date, we thought it would be done by, correct?
Well, it isn't an all-or-nothing proposition, in that the ones that we have now, we can still bill from, so we have about 3,500 that are either installed or in stock. And so I keep asking for a scheduled date, they don't have one as far as the delivery, and, you know, provided we, provided we get the material that we need to install, the transmitters themselves, we will be on schedule and we'll be able to build the entire city within a couple of months.
And those that we've already converted, we still continue to see the trend that there aren't fluctuation in the rates that the households being built? There's a percentage that you said are now being billed off, what's being transmitted off, and we haven't seen any fluctuation in the build rate, based on that?
No, you know, it's a unique system, and we're, at least, you know, we've only had it up and running for a couple of weeks, as far as gathering data, but it transmits, reads by the hour in batches of five-hour increments. And so you could really graph out and catch a lot of problems, answer a lot of questions from the consumers, and as far as, you know, what usage they have, if they have a leak, and that sort of thing.
Okay.
It's very user-friendly.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Lloyd. Jenny, anything else from your area this evening? Joe, how about you, anything from our?
That was my full vote.
That was it, all right. City Clerk, anything from the clerk's area this evening?
The election task force met last week, we had representation from the public, from some of our election inspectors, and from city employees, and it was a very productive session, a lot of great suggestions were made that fall primarily in three categories: training of workers, process and crowd control, and education of voters. My office is going to be consolidating all those suggestions, the task force is going to meet again towards the end of January, and we're going to flesh out a work plan, including timelines, and we'll report back to you at that point. And in addition, I am encouraging interested residents who would like to serve on a board or commission to consider serving on the civil service board if you have any experience in human resources, or on the beautification commission. We are sorely in need of handy artistic people who are willing to help our wonderful Peggy Snow out on that board.
Thank you, great reminder. All right, City Manager, anything from your area this evening?
I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and a friendly reminder that due to the holidays, that our hours are limited at city hall for the next two weeks. Monday and Tuesday of both weeks will be closed due to Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, which is Monday and Tuesday, and in the following week again, for New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, and then, of course, we are closed Friday. So the drop box is available for any payments that you need to make on those days that we are closed. So we will reopen and resume normal hours on January 7th, and go back to the normal schedule.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, Chris, anything from the alternative aspect?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Councilman Martin?
The only thing I have is to wish everyone a safe and happy holidays, it's been a rough couple of weeks, and I think with everything going on in the world, so it's a, it's a good time to relax and enjoy our city, enjoy our families, so.
Thanks. Councilman Lennon?
I have nothing other than a Merry Christmas, and everybody be safe, be happy, and shop locally.
Yeah, very nice. Mayor Potem, Piana?
I just want to say thank you to everybody who came out to the public engagement meeting last Wednesday for the Woodward Alternative Analysis led by the project manager, SEMCON. We had a great turnout, great feedback, and I'm heading to Cleveland this week with the Woodward, with the Woodward Alternative Analysis Steering Committee hosted by SEMCON to visit and ride their Bus Rapid Transit system. So I'll look forward to me tweeting on my Twitter program, and at MelPiana, and.
How many followers do you have?
A lot, more than the chief. But he has at least a couple of years to catch up. And I'll be posting some images on Facebook, so, and you can go to Transform Woodward. Besides that, have a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and be safe, and relax.
Wonderful. Councilman Galloway?
Thank you, Mayor. As has previously been stated, this is the last meeting of the year, and I wish I only had happy things to report about 2012, but I think it would be wrong to end this year without commenting on a couple of the less happy things that happened this year in the state of Michigan. And someone was, once wrote that eternal vigilance is the price of liberty, and I really think that no year that I can remember in recent history has this been more, has need for this been more apparent than after 2012. You know, it's hard to do this without being partisan, but the Republicans really did a number on the state of Michigan this year, starting with their theft of the Oakland County redistricting process that denied voters in Ferndale and Hazel Park, the representation of Councilman, or Commissioner Covey, and just changing the rules after the game had already been played essentially. And then the shameful activities of the last week or two up in Lansing. It's really a laundry list of bad policy initiatives from the so-called right-to-work legislation, or the Freedom to Freeload Act, the restriction of reproductive health options for women, atrocious, totally designed to limit access to healthcare. The effort, successful unfortunately, or partially successful, to defund cities by eliminating the personal property tax without providing a clear 100% replacement for those funds. Decision to overturn, you know, the voter's decision to eliminate the emergency financial manager, right on the heels of that voter-led initiative, an attempt to privatize public education that thankfully failed for now. And then, I think perhaps the most despicable, the Republicans are trying to encourage us to bring guns into schools and daycares, something that just defies any sort of logic. And after doing all this, they passed laws to make it more difficult to recall them. You know, we need to spend time with our families, enjoy the season, but I think we also have to plan on keeping an eye out and becoming more active in 2013. This stuff just doesn't happen, it happens because we become apathetic and content with what we have. And I think anybody who's been active very long in public service understands that rights that we have could be taken away, accomplishments that we gain can go back, and it's only we the people who keep this nation great, and, you know, be on the lookout for 2013, who knows what's on its way, but it doesn't have to get worse, it can get better. So Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and get to work on January 1st.
Thank you, Councilman. In case people are wondering what all this black paraphernalia is up here, the police chief has presented us with various gifts from the police department, and we appreciate it, Chief, thank you very much. We are reminded, after the tragedy in Connecticut, not only are our thoughts and prayers and hearts heavy for what happened there, but also appreciative of the first responders, and again, just how important we take for granted our police and our fire and all our first responders, but this is a good reminder, but we're reminded every day, we appreciate what you folks do, so thank you very much. I just want to wish all the residents a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, a safe and prosperous New Year. Thank you very much, and we'll see you in January, meeting adjourned.